6:00 PM and we'll call this regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission to order on Thursday, June 22nd. First order of business is roll call. Marty Sella, are you doing that this evening?
Commissioner Vanderstark?
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair Adam?
Present.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
And both of our liaisons, Pucciolato and Mendoza are here. We have Coram.
Thank you very much. I've asked Commissioner Pro to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so if you'd please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. This is a continued meeting from last week where we had a very good discussion and heard a lot of public comment. So if you intend to talk this evening about that issue, please make sure that it is something new and something relevant that we haven't already heard. If you've already spoken and those comments have been put in the record, we ask that you hold off to expedite this meeting. So with that said, is there anyone that would like to comment this evening?
If you are online and would like to comment, please raise your hand. Oh, I got.
Yeah, that's good. Kelly Cox is online and Mickey is online. And those of you online will get your comments at the very end, well, at the conclusion here. So if you have something new to add that we haven't heard already, please come forward, state your name, and we'll hear from you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is David King and I'm a resident at 800 Bunker Hill in Centennial Park. At the last meeting, I was here to ask for denial of the temporary permit for construction of parking, construction of model homes, and sales office for Western Crossing Project with Dr. Horton. I know many residents of Centennial Park have addressed issues of construction dust and other items. I'm here to address the concerns of public safety regarding egress and ingress of Western Cross and State Route 287 from Centennial Park. I learned at the last meeting that while Phase 1 of Western Crossing project addressed these plans, and Phase 2 submitted either by ignorance or incompetence of city employees, city planning, city attorney, or city council was left out of the formal plans. I also learned that officials are willing to accept a handshake and a wink from the builder, Dr. Horton. I've reviewed court records for Superior Court of Arizona. There's 140 cases since 1993 for Dr. Horton, including, and while I did not research the disposition or the cause, I was in business for 35 years. I don't work on a wink and a handshake. Also, we don't have any guarantee from the state Arizona Department of Transportation of the issues related to the highway and the egress and ingress. The permit was tabled. I'm asking again for West to deny that at this time. I will say that Dr. Horton and the builders have made progress in the area. The area is clean. They've been working on reducing the dust. They've worked to putting walls up and doing some improvements. But again, it does not answer the question about ADOT's approval to fix 287. At the last meeting, I told you my concerns. I drive that road every day. I'm nearly rear-ended one or two times a week turning into that neighborhood. Without that, by the grace of God, nobody's been killed or injured seriously at that intersection. But if this is put through and it start being built before that is completed, there will be a fatality or a major injury at that intersection. I reviewed the city report in regards to transportation. It seems like there was a focus on the north side of the town, Hunt Highway. Again, I believe that that report is outdated. It needs to be looked at at 287. And again, we need to look to get this improved before any permit is issued. I thank you guys for your time, and again, I'm expressing my concerns over safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And remember, you have three minutes.
I promise. Bonnie Barriola, Maricopa County. The problem with this case is a much bigger picture with Florence. Staff has turned council into puppets and they are attempting to do the same with the P&amp;Z Commission. The only information you're supposed to have is from them. The minutes from your last meeting are an example of who is in charge. The minutes of July 21st, 2022 say the commission asked for a stipulation of identification of a second egress. This in no way translates to what your current staff report says. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that the town staff evaluate the feasibility of extending Centennial Park Avenue out to Adamsville Road. You all are now asking when it will be done at the developer's expense, not timed sometime in the future at town's expense. As I told council on Tuesday and stated in my commentary in the newspaper, for safety purposes, I trust the commissioners stand firm with intersection improvements on SR 287 as stated in stipulation number six, and also determine who will enforce this stipulation. And also, the second, oh, and require the second ingress/egress by the developer before anyone occupies a home in Phase 1. I quote from town's regulations, "P&amp;Z to ensure adequate traffic circulation through coordinated street systems with relation to major thoroughfares and adjoining subdivisions." Thank you very much for being on the commission, and I don't envy y'all having to deal with this case. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else before we go to those online? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
Good evening, council. I did speak last time too, but I was online.
Please state your name for the record.
Sorry, Courtney Ramirez, and I live in Centennial Park right next door. I can't for the life of me figure out why construction was even allowed to start without the roads first for safety. Who allowed it? Everybody in the economic department doesn't live here, but they might make all the decisions and get their check and leave, not caring about our safety, which is imperative. My daughter-in-law and one-year-old was almost hit by one of those tractors on Friday. Why is that development allowed to build without the safety of the roads? Detrimental to health? I've been in the hospital twice because of what I've dealt with from next door. I've almost been rear-ended three times in May alone at that intersection. And right now, I'm having a really hard time speaking because it's affecting me pretty bad, and I live right next door to it. The police isn't enforcing the noise. The county is not enforcing the dust. Nobody is enforcing anything with that project for 12 months. For 12 months. It's dangerous. People die from valley fever. Didn't you know that? Valley fever is a bioweapon. And nobody is enforcing anything over there. Nobody. And why are the roads always last? There is no date in sight right now for the roads for widening on Centennial and 287. My daughter-in-law and one-year-old grandchild was almost hit by a tractor on Friday because she had to swerve from one of those big rigs. Do they need to die first? I ask you that, and I ask all of you that, staff. You all ought to be ashamed of yourself for letting this happen.
Chairman Frost, members of board, I'm Tom Rankin, live at Highway 345, West 287 in Florence. Again, here to remind you, on this project that we're here about has been messed up since it was developed. I happened to be the mayor that assigned the plant map, and it wasn't, I would say, two years after it was first brought to council at that time. Between that time and the time we approved it, how did I know it but our planning director and town manager agreed with the developer to change what we had in it? So there, we started off there. Like I'm saying, this plat has been a pain in the, you know what? I'm going to go back to the meeting of 7:21, your meeting, and these are from your minutes. Ms. Benitez told you that the town plans to extend Centennial Park Avenue to Adamsville Road, but it will not happen during the development of the subdivision. You're putting over 300 homes in there compared to the 50 that are already there and having one way in and one way out. My expertise is not in planning, this is not in development. My expertise is in public safety. And that's why I'm here today to tell you that this is a very unsafe project. It's going to get people killed, period, in a story. That exit sits on that where the canal comes up and it kind of evens out, but it comes from both sides. Both sides are coming up to that intersection. There are some times, and I live on that road, and I know that there's cars that go by my house all the time, 60 to 70 miles an hour. And they come from Coolidge or going from Florence, one or the other. It doesn't matter, they go both ways. I don't even know if that road on Adamsville Road is even in the five-year plan for the town. That needs to be checked out and see if it is. Because what you're doing is allowing this subdivision to come in with one exit in, one entrance out, or however you want to say it. The road is a 35, or a 30-foot chip seal road in there. They called for a third lane. Where's the third lane going to go when you can only go left or right coming out of that project? I don't know. I don't know what they're talking about there. Common sense dictates, I wasn't notified at the original meeting, I would restate that for the record. I think I was left out of it, and it was probably on purpose. I don't know who sent that out, but I live within 300 feet of that project and I did not receive it, and I wonder how many others in the same boat. Thank you.
Don't turn to the technology and have those online. So Kelly Cox, Marty Sella, can you unmute her, please? And if you'd please identify yourself for the record, and you have three minutes.
You're up to speak. Oh, there it goes. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Apologies. Good evening, commissioners. This is Kelly Cox. I'm a lifetime resident here in Florence, and I, for safety reasons, want people to vote no on this temporary use permit until the roads are completed. For safety, for everyone in the area and everyone traveling through the area, I stand with my neighbors on this project. It seems like a circus going on over there, and it's unfortunate what's happening and how it's affecting people, so please vote no for the temporary use permit until roads are completed.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. And Mickey is next up. If you would please unmute her, Marty Sella.
You there, Mickey? I'm going to need you to unmute. Perfect.
Okay, so you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I don't live right there. I'm on the unincorporated town of Satah, Florence. However, I travel 287 often, probably every day. I have friends that live there, and I could tell you sometimes it's pretty precarious getting out of that intersection right now after visiting, so I couldn't even imagine trying to get out of there with 300 new homes. With the homes there now, everyone has multiple cars, and nothing's going to be changed until, from what I hear, who knows? It's a giant question mark. So I'm imploring you to vote no until the roads are adequately fixed, for want of a better word. I mean, the system that's there already maybe is just passing for the residents that live there, but I agree with Mr. Rankin. There's people who fly down that road 60, 70 miles an hour. I'm tailgated constantly, and I'm doing the speed limit. So I can't even imagine the tragedies that will occur if this is allowed to go as is. I think it's an atrocity, and it's, you're kind of telling the people of Florence that they don't matter, and the greenbacks do, and that's kind of sad. And I think that you can all rise above that and vote no and do the right thing. That's all. I just wanted to say my thing is public safety. So vote no until it's handled properly, regardless of how long that takes. You know what? Maybe it's motivation that it will get handled quicker if they're told no. Okay, I guess that's it. I appreciate the time. Thanks for listening.
Thanks for your comments. And with that, we will, we will close the call to public. Thank you for your comments.
Chair? Can I just make a point of order on something that was, a comment that was made? Mr. Rankin, I just need to correct something. You said, "We're allowing this." We're not allowing this. This was allowed by your own admission through your administration and the Planning and Zoning Commission that was impaneled then. We're correcting this. Just need to go that in the record. This is not our mess. We're trying to clean this up, and we're trying to best play the lousy hand of cards we were dealt.
I, let me tell you, I've lived with this for a long time, with making a mistake because I didn't check what my staff was doing. We're doing the same thing today. We're making another big mistake today. And I don't know if you know it or not, but what they claim to be a dirt road runs through private property. And I got ahold of, I tried to get ahold of the owner today. I bet you he hadn't even been notified or advised that the town was thinking of going in there and going through his property with another roadway. If you take that dirt road up there, it goes right into his front, right into his yard where all of his vehicles are up there. They're trying to block people from going there. Now, the only way to do that is by intimate domain. And if the town was to go to intimate domain on this project, they're doing it for one reason, and that's for making the developer not have to pay it. The town will end up paying it. If that's what you want, that's fine. But that's the only way you're going to get that property. That property is not an easement or a right-of-way, but that's what the staff has told you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item 6A. Presentation, approval, approval of conditions or denial of temporary use permit for this project?
I would ask that you go back to item 5 for the minutes.
I skipped right over. I'm sorry. Thanks for keeping me online. So we have discussion, approval, disapproval of minutes from our regular meeting conducted on June 1st, 2023. So with that, concerns, comments, commissioners?
Yeah, actually, there's something glaringly missing in the minutes. Third paragraph down on the second page of, the third page of minutes, I guess. Paragraph starts, "Vice Chair Adam stated that a second ingress/egress..." She inquired why those stipulations were not included in the approval vote by the town council. The next paragraph, "Mr. Kraus stated that a second access will be provided," completely glossing over the fact that Mr. Kraus admitted it went on the preliminary plat and by his own failure to act, did not make it to the final plat. That needs to be in the minutes. Part of the problem that you had, again, by your own admission, Mr. Rankin, is that no one was keeping an eye on what the staff was doing. We're trying to fix that. That has to be in the minutes. Accountability, damn it.
Yes, thank you.
Mr., Mr., I would...
Mr. Rankin, I'm sorry, we've closed the call to public. We're beyond that. Thank you very much.
I'll talk to you after the meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. So what wording would you like to, how would you amend that?
I would like it to show what Mr. Kraus said, that it was on the preliminary plat, and by his failure, it did not make it to the final plat. Someone needs to be accountable for that.
So was that a motion for approval with that?
Yeah, a motion to approve with that condition, or no.
Any other comments?
We need to get a second before we can discuss.
She has another comment.
I, oh, I'm not discussing his motion. I wanted to say something.
It'll die then. Relax a second.
No, I think what, she has other additions she wants to make.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, I would echo Commissioner Kapalongo. I think towards the end, before we got to the point of making our final motion, there was quite a discussion by Commissioner Kapalongo about needing things in writing, and he specified several items. So I don't remember off the top of my head, but I did replay the videotape earlier today, and I'm not seeing that in these notes. And the reason why I bring it up is because it's very specific to why we're here tonight. And from my opinion, I'm not seeing a lot of change in the documentation for tonight from when we were here on June 1st, but that was my comment. So I would make the motion to hold.
We've got a motion on the side. You don't amend your motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that's a good call because that's something else that was glossed over. Commissioner Kapalongo expressed his frustration at the lack of a written agreement ensuring the improvements will be completed. Nowhere does it mention that I said going forward, I need to see things in writing. We all do.
That's...
Right. So I would amend that that gets added as well.
Since it's such an important topic, I would, well, I guess, you want to finish your motion?
No, no, no.
Okay. So you're withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, well, I'm amending the motion, the motion.
We still need a second.
Right. Do you have another? Okay, please, go ahead. I will withdraw my motion until you're done.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do not approve the minutes tonight until we come back with the written minutes according to the videotape on these pertinent facts, specifically having things in writing.
Second.
So we have a motion to continue the minutes to the next meeting, so we see that this documentation is part of that?
Until this record shows what the video shows.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll table these till next time. Yeah, audience, we appreciate your enthusiasm, but please don't clap. Okay? Thank you. Okay, now if I'm back in order again here, item 6A, presentation, approval, approval of conditions or denial of a temporary use permit to use lots for a model home sales office and construction office properties within Western Crossing and Centennial Park Avenue. This is a continuation of the items discussed originally, discussion originally held on June 1st, 2023. So Marty Sella, do you have a staff report?
We do. Just let me pull up the presentation.
Yeah, just use this. Chairman, members of the commission and members of the public, this item is a request for a temporary use permit submitted by Dr. Horton to develop four lots within Western Crossing subdivision for a sales office and a construction office. This item was considered and discussed at your June 1st meeting, and there was a motion to continue the item for two weeks until June 15th. However, because there was a conflicting town meeting with the Arizona Transportation Board, it was decided to reschedule the meeting to June 22nd tonight. I apologize for the change. It was something that we didn't coordinate, didn't know in advance. And one of the reasons for the continuance is the commission wanted to review the plans for the intersection improvements at SR 287 and Centennial Park Avenue, as well as the widening of Centennial Park Avenue and the timing of these improvements. So I'll just briefly go over, since the commission, I think most all the, four of the five commission members were here on the, the first, are familiar with it. It's, there are, as I indicated, it's a temporary use permit for a sales office, construction office. It'd be a two-year, the code only allows for up to two years for, to develop and use the four lots. However, the developer can come back and ask for an extension of that TUP. I might refer to it as a TUP, Temporary Use Permit. Two of the lots will be used, one lot would be used for parking for the sales office, one lot would be used for parking for the construction office. The buildings would, would be later converted to single-family homes for release, for sale at the time of build, closeout of the development, which is very common with most builders. There's the, the three, the four lots are located there at the first entrance into Western Crossing right off State Route, right off Centennial Park Avenue. There are the four lots with the site plans associated with those. The land was zoned back in 2003. It was called Western Century Development. At the time, it was zoned for, it was a PUD overlay, it's owned for single-family residential. The town code does require a TUP for sales and a model home construction offices. There are the four lots. There are the elevations of the two houses. I'm going too fast. Let me know. Or you want to look at something a little closer. Dr. Horton decided to locate those offices at the entrance so they're readily visible to the visitors, so the visitors wouldn't have to drive within the subdivision during home construction activity. The subdivision's onsite improvements, paved roads, water and sewer to each of the lots will be installed prior to the establishing these uses and occupying the sales office as well as the, the construction office. Based on some other projects that Dr. Horton has done in the area, they're projecting about 18 to 25 visitors throughout the week, and most of the visitors would come on weekends. The hours of operation would be Monday, 12 to 6, and Tuesday through Friday, 10 to 6, as well, excuse me, as well as Saturday and Sunday. as well, excuse me, as well as Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 6. There is, this is the map of the Phase 1 plat that was approved by the town in 2006. The plat was recorded with the locations, the roads. There's three access points from the Phase 1 onto Centennial Park Avenue, and then there's the one access onto ADOT from Centennial Park Avenue. The red area, that is the area that's Phase 2 that was approved more recently. And this is the Phase 2 plat that was presented to the commission for approval. The accesses through Phase 2 would go through Phase 1. I know circulation and traffic concerns are the primary issue here, even though we're considering a model use complex with a construction office and a sales office. Obviously, the concerns of circulation and traffic, so we're going to spend some time talking about that since that's the area where the public and commission are most focused on. So as I indicated, Centennial Park Avenue was the only access approved onto SR 287 when Phase 1 final plat was approved in 2006. I believe based on the minutes, I can read, the minutes are sketchy, that, that it was talked about, a second access, but ADOT, it appeared they went to ADOT, and ADOT would not allow a second access. That's what it seemed to insinuate in the minutes. But this is what, this is what we have today, and this is what we're working with. The Phase 1 final plat, as I indicated, includes three local roads accessing onto Centennial Park Avenue, which is a collector road. The town engineered, and the town requires a traffic impact analysis with Phase 2, which was submitted by a professional licensed traffic engineer, and he's, and she's here tonight. She'll make a presentation after I'm completed. Her name's Shelley Sorensen. And that traffic impact analysis was reviewed and approved by our traffic engineer, by our town engineer, and they are implementing the recommendations of that traffic impact analysis. Staff recommends the town evaluate an alternative access by extending Centennial Park Avenue to Adamsville Road. After the commission approved the preliminary plat, the stipulation that was placed by the commission was for a second access. This was something that was advocated by me to ADOT, to, to to the engineer and talked about, and it was considered that the best approach would be to extend Centennial Park Avenue to Adamsville Road. That was, seemed to be the most reasonable and feasible based upon the existence of the final plat, Phase 1, that had already been recorded, approved and recorded, and it seemed like the best alternative, and which I believe the town, town manager can address that later, but will be, will be evaluating and pursuing that at another time. Forster, who owns the property, but they have a contract to purchase it once the lots are developed, has submitted plans to the Arizona Department of Transportation in December of 2022. That's how long it goes, that's how long it takes to get plans approved. And in fact, yesterday, they finally got the plans approved by ADOT. And those plans are what's going to be implemented by the developer. And they can't begin work until they get a permit from ADOT, and they haven't got that permit, but that's what they're going to be working on in the next couple of weeks. This, one of the issues was, what are the traffic intersection improvements? This is, this is the intersection improvements. You'll see the widening of the intersection with the turn lanes and the, on, for eastbound traffic from 287 onto Centennial Park Avenue, as well as the, the other lane going east into the subdivision. And I won't dwell on that since we have a traffic engineer here this evening. So the timeline for off-site improvements, D.R. Horton will not begin construction of houses for sale to the public until the onsite improvements are completed. Onsite improvements means the subdivision roads and the water and sewer will be completed, substantially completed by Forster. There may be a few minor things, but there will be paved roads and there will be water and sewer to the lots before they start getting building permits for construction to the public. They project that the completion of those in September, October timeframe. Sometimes, it's dependent somewhat on weather conditions. We're entering the monsoon season, so moisture can take a toll on construction. As I indicated, the sales office and construction office will not be occupied prior to substantial completion of the intersection improvements and the widening of Centennial Park Avenue. There, and the impact won't occur until people are actually living in the houses. D.R. Horton understands that the widening of Centennial Park Avenue and the off-site improvements must be substantially completed before permits are issued for new single-family homes. They've agreed to that. It was stipulation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they accept that. They will live with that. One other issue that the vice chair had pointed out at the last meeting that was where was the stipulation for the landscape, where the trail connectivity? And one of the stipulations that the planning commission did, asked for was to have connectivity to the property to the north. And it was suggested that it be on the northeast corner. However, the, the problem was, was that the San Carlos Irrigation Canal Road and ditch run along that, that perimeter, and the, the pathway would intersect with that, and the irrigation district would not allow for public access, or wouldn't grant access to that. We looked at other options. This seemed to be the best option along the open space track. There is still access onto the, unofficial access, I guess, onto the irrigation district if we ever are able to get approval. So you do have that possibility, but it's not a legal access that, and recognized by the San Carlos community. These are the findings that are in the, the town code. When we receive a use permit application, a conditional or temporary use permit, we apply this project to these standards. What kind of negative impact it'll have to the health, safety, peace, comfort, they're very general. Will it unreasonably interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic? Does the zoning support the use? Will the property be kept clean and sanitary, free of litter? And parking areas will be dustproof? So those are the standards we apply, and here are the findings based upon those general standards is that the two model homes that'll be used for offices will not negatively impact those residing or working nearby. A sales office will have limited hours of operation, estimated to have 18 to 25 visitors a week, mostly on weekends. Two lots will be developed for parking with the compacted decomposed granite for dust control. The zoning allows these houses to be converted, these offices be converted to houses at subdivision build-out. The general plan allows for model home complexes, sales office, and, and this is a complimentary use to any new residential subdivision. The lots would also be landscaped to make them attractive to visitors. And one other thing that I think it's important is there's no development agreement with this, with this project. The, the developer is paying, will pay the prevailing impact fees to the town with the issuance of each building permit. They will be paving the roads, installing the water and sewer lines at privately funded, no public funds are involved in that. It's all privately funded, no, no public financing, only private, only private funds. Based upon the, the findings, staff recommends approval of the two-year temporary use permit subject to the conditions that were outlined in, in your staff report. They have to comply with all other town codes and ordinances. It expires in two years unless it's extended by the commission for an additional two years. There is the stipulation that we, that the commission imposed on the preliminary plat, which is here, that the offsites have to be done before issuance of building permits for any single-family homes within Phase 1. And the developer must keep the, the model home complex clean, sanitary and free of litter, and the, and the circulation and the parking areas must be dust-free. The hours of operation are also included as a stipulation. The sales and construction office cannot be occupied until the off-site improvements at the intersection of SR 287 and Centennial Park are installed. So there, there won't be any impact because, until that happens, until they're occupied. Also, this is a recommendation of staff that we, that the planning commission recommends the town staff evaluate the feasibility of extending Centennial Park Avenue from Western Crossings to Adamsville Road as an additional access from the subdivision. And the, the commission can add any additional stipulations they feel is appropriate. So at this time, well, before I turn the mic over to Shelley, the commission may approve this TUP with conditions. They can amend the stipulations that staff has recommended, or they can add new stipulations, or they can deny the temporary use permit. So you have, those are the options. And I just want to make clear that you understand that other stipulations can be added, or you can amend what's been, if you, if you disagree with staff's recommendation. So with, if, with the chairman's indulgence, can I ask Shelley to come up and do a presentation on, since the, since the audience and the commission are fairly most, pretty much focused on traffic? We have a traffic engineer here that's analyzed the intersection, analyzed the subdivision, what kind of impact it'll have, and I think she could shed more light on it than I can. So I'll turn it over to Shelley.
That would be great. Before you leave, just one question, just for clarification. You said that ADOT has approved the plans?
Yes.
So it's just a matter of getting the permit and they can move forward with construction?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, a question? Thank you, Harvey. Just, you know, one term that was stated twice in your report, your presentation, substantial completion. That's a vague term in my view. What is that, 51%, 48%? What's substantial completion?
Well, it's a judgment call.
Right.
It's a judgment call. I guess the analogy I give is, I, a lot of times, if you bought, if you've ever bought a new house, I assume some of you bought new houses, or you moved into an existing house, and typically in a new house, you walk around with the builder and you have a punch list item. You know, the doors, all the doors are in, the air conditioner works, the water's on, everything works. You could live in it, but well, maybe there's a socket that doesn't work. Maybe this, this one little bolt is missing. So there's maybe some punch list items that have to be done. And the same thing happens when you do infrastructure improvements, subdivision infrastructure improvements. You don't accept the improvements until you do, you do a walkthrough and you make sure everything works. Maybe the manhole doesn't quite fit. I just want to make sure you understand that it may not be perfect, but it will be substantially complete. And you just have to trust the judgment of the staff to make that call, but the roads will be paved.
Last meeting, we don't. So basically, what you're saying is substantial improvements is just some amorphous thing. Take my word for it, whatever, it's okay.
Commissioner Capolongo, I guess if you want to give me the standard for how to measure substantial, I, I mean, I...
I would say substantial is greater than 70%?
I don't think I can quantify.
Like being able to see the finish line. That would be substantial.
I can't put, I don't think it'd be...
Sometimes I wonder who you're working for, us or them?
Okay, Shelley. And Shelley, if you'd name and whatnot for the record, please.
So name's Shelley Sorensen, address is 10555 North 114th Street, Suite 106, Hudson Scottsdale, Arizona 85259. The traffic, chairman and commissioners, I'm the traffic engineer who completed the traffic study for this project. Typically in standard, is right, you do a traffic study whenever projects like this go in. This is just for reference, this is where the project is located. I'm sure you guys are all aware of this, but this is just kind of general information.
Excuse me, could you just tell us when the traffic study was done?
I can. The traffic study was, hold on just a second, give me a second. It was completed. I apologize. Let me pull it up. The traffic study was completed in September of last 2022. So last September. And was, so then, right, the traffic study then goes through the approval process. It was approved by ADOT. Just for reference, it was approved by ADOT in September, the end of September of 2022. So ADOT saw it and approved it within that month that they received it. So here's the project. Here is the existing homes that are out along Centennial, and these, so when we go out and do traffic studies, these are the counts, we collect traffic counts for the intersection of Centennial and SR 287. These are the existing traffic counts, and when we do an analysis, it's called a level of service. So we get letter grades essentially for how it is operating. And as you can see right now, that intersection is operating with level of service A and B and C, and this is during the peak hours. So during the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour, this is how it's operating. So, and just, just for reference, levels of service go A through F. Typically, most intersections, we're looking for a D or better, which, so it's a little different than your grades at school. A D or better is what we're generally looking for. It relates to the amount of delay or the time that you're waiting. A C is typically waiting about 30 seconds, so half a minute waiting before you're able to turn. So that just kind of gives you a frame of reference for what's happening there. The proposed development is going to come in, and this is just kind of gives you an idea of the impact of this development and the amount of traffic that it's generating. And here are, so a traffic study was done and approved, and here are the recommendations that came out of the traffic study, and then the plans were made. So there is going to be the installation of a dedicated eastbound left turn lane. The Centennial is being widened to provide two egress lanes and one ingress lane. The existing westbound right turn lane is being extended, and then the, this area right here will allow for a two-stage left, which means you're able to turn out and then get into the main line. So that allows traffic to operate better. And then just for reference, when we look at the project, right, so with these improvements and the additional volumes that are coming with the development, you can see that we're still in the year 2028, so that's we look forward into the future of this project being built out. You can see that we're still going to operate at similar levels of service, Bs and Cs, and this shows you actually the seconds of delay. So at most, you're rating 21 seconds there to make that left turn out, which is pretty standard. And mind you, keep in mind, these are during the peak hours, so during the heaviest times of the day. So ultimately, as far as traffic is concerned, you know, it's not... So ultimately, as far as traffic is concerned, you know, it's not a concern for the addition, with these additional improvements, you're seeing similar to what it is operating now.
Shelley, you want to take a question now or wait till the end of your presentation?
We can take questions now.
Okay. Thought it might be helpful with this, with this, um, picture up. The, the 2028 modeling that is being done here, does that account for the increase in traffic as well on 287?
Correct, it does. So there's a growth factor that is applied, just for general growth along 287.
Okay.
In addition to the site-specific volumes. Any other questions, commissioners?
So, just so I'm getting it in my head.
Nope.
With the improvements that ADOT's approved, apparently, traffic will be the same when the build-out happens.
So traffic will operate the same, right? You'll have more traffic, but it will operate the same. The delays, which means the time that you're waiting, will essentially be the same because you're adding those turn lanes.
So that includes the houses that D.R. Horton builds and anticipated new growth in the Coolidge, Florence area?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Adams.
We're, we're through interrupting you. Do you want to continue? Thank you.
Why don't you say that would be the end of my presentation? Are there any other questions specific to the traffic with this project and development?
Thank you.
Chair, I had some questions going back to Harvey's just presentation.
Okay, good. Do we want to do those now, or is, is there more staff presentation that's going to happen?
No, that's it.
Okay. I, I understand that our town manager might ask some information for us on future CIP and, and thoughts on extension and second access and that, so. Mr. Martin, if you'd like to address that now, then we can get all that, and then we'll ask our questions. How's that? That might answer some of the questions right here.
Sure. Hi, Chair and Vice Chair and Planning Commission. This is my first physical time being in front of you. I have observed the meetings, uh, as they've been recorded, actually going back before I was, uh, termed this opportunity. So I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. Uh, really simply, I, I, there's a lot of things that I could go through as a planner myself. Uh, I will tell you, we're, we're headed in the right direction from this point forward. And I apologize that we have made mistakes to this point. But relative to the improvements out there, literally the internal workings of it, I have a, a, an opportunity on my desk, literally, that Chris, our town engineer, has put there relative to Butte and its circulation and the connection, ultimately, uh, this as well. And so Chris, when he returns, uh, the opportunity to go ahead and get a preliminary, uh, probably a design concept report on what this could look like, inclusive of the Butte Avenue. Uh, as we grow, we're going to need better circulation, period. And so I can see that, and I'm asking that staff take that in priority, which will lead to ultimately placing this particular, uh, Centennial Avenue, uh, before council to consider and its CIP next year. Our CIP was just approved. To be able to do that, and the timeframe it's going to take to go ahead and evaluate this, ultimately determine design, and then, uh, potentially what it would take to construct, and the timeframe in which other priorities, that's something that will be considered this coming spring. Uh, so hopefully that helps in some level, let you know where it is in priority, at least, uh, from my perspective. Council will ultimately determine what priority it takes among a lot of improvements, transportation specifically, uh, in town. I'll address quickly, uh, you know, from a professional standpoint, substantial completion is, is a fairly standard statement to be made. It is to where it works. It has to work for it to be called substantially complete. So as an engineer, they would, basically what you see there per the design plans will have to be completely in place. It literally means the very last things that, uh, someone might walk through and see. Maybe it's striping not complete, maybe it's a sign that's missing or something, but it should, basically what you see in that drawing should be complete as it shows there to be determined substantially complete. And that should be the standard, that's the standard for infrastructure as it is for housing. And that's what we would do if this particular, uh, approval went forward. Um, and then last, I'll just address the water line. Again, I can't apologize enough, uh, just really, the last week or so, the individuals in that community have had to deal with, um, just some operation issues, as well as maybe some siding issues. I'm working on those too when we return. Uh, we just got to do better and either help the developer make sure they know where they're digging and/or, uh, help make sure they have good folks out there digging it. And so those folks are in the audience hearing that as well. I know that's something that D.R. Horton, uh, also understands and was frankly addressed. The specifics, or at least the discussion about the water line, the water line is only taking that section that was planned for. Uh, if, if nothing happened even from 2006, even to today, the line that is put in along Centennial Park Avenue was needed anyway. The 12-inch line that goes down 287, the new line that we're trying to connect with on Adamsville Road, and then the connection between is a system improvement needed to be done. And so the irony of this is that hopefully, sometimes government will do it right, and we did not want to wait, uh, because our process will probably start with a bid out in the fall. Putting a bid out after they complete, hopefully substantially complete, the, the actual road work, then go in and cut open that road again and place in the 12-inch line, that would have been really bad. So what we've been able to do is to work with, uh, the contractor to put that section in while they were there, and then they can go ahead and cover it. That way, it's the best possible, uh, time to do that. But from Liberty going north and then ultimately connecting with Adamsville Road, that particular part of the, the water line improvement, system improvement that's planned will then happen there. And those are WIFAFunds going forward, but those are not WIFAFunds working on the project today. So I know that's been part of some of the back and forth in the neighborhood, and I wanted to make sure publicly that, that was clear. Any other questions or things I, challenges I placed in front of you? I know I'm new, so it's okay, though. I've done, I've been in tough meetings before, so I can, I understand it, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. I, it's a tough position to be in. It's a tough position to be in the community and come here and make statements. It's tough. So if I can help, let me know. Otherwise, I don't know if maybe the applicant has anything, Chairman, but I'm complete with mine.
And just, and just to restate what you said, just so that I know exactly what you said, and so you can correct me in case my understanding is wrong.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Um, the, the intention right now is to put a design concept report together, and our town engineer is doing that for the, for the connection of, of a, a road to the north to Adamsville. And that would be put into the CIP, not this generation, because it's just too late to do it, but next year's generation of CIP would have this project put into it.
Yeah, as the town manager, and again, those folks at the very end of the table are hearing this as well. Based on the feedback that I've gotten over the last couple of weeks and in, in going through this, I'm going to sit down with the town engineer when he returns, and we'll go through that as to what that means. Ultimately, that may require some level of action by the council because of the substantial nature of that request, might lead to over $50,000, which goes to the council, so on and so forth. But I can tell you that that conversation will happen, we'll key you in, and we'll let staff keep you up to date on those progresses.
Great, well, that's good news. We appreciate that.
Can I make, make a comment? So, town manager, welcome. Welcome to Florence, speaking as someone who lives downtown. It, uh, water system, um, it happens. It just happens, and, and it happens a lot. It's, it's old-town Florence. I see a difference, I know I've had many conversations with our chair, and, uh, I think your guiding hand is very helpful. The comment I wanted to make was, knowing that this is a hot topic right now, I see a lot of times there's a little bit of hysteria just because we don't know what's going on. So when the water main breaks or when the police lines go out, if there could be a little bit more detail in the communication so that people just kind of calm down, because all those alerts just, they put us on high alert, but we don't know what to think, and human nature goes to the worst possible scenario.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I, you know, we had a meeting with APS not too long ago, staff did, uh, first responders, et cetera. Uh, and APS, whether you appreciate that or not, probably sets a good standard there. If you go on their website or you go on their app, it actually says an ETA or an expected time, gives you a little bit of detail, uh, so that it can be actually read quickly, sent out quickly, and then updated quickly. Um, the other thing I, I will mention as well, I had some people reach out. One of the things you can do if you are actually in that group, you can actually pick and choose how you want to receive it, because I know when it happens, I'm getting a call, I'm getting a text, I'm getting an email. And then if we send it up again, and all of a sudden 10 minutes later we update that, all of a sudden, you might actually get annoyed by the number of times, but there is a way you can call our non-emergency line and adjust, if you will, how you receive those messages. We're going to be putting that online as well to educate the public that, again, sometimes it, you know, we want to get the right information out in a good, timely, succinct, but clear manner, and we can do better at that, no doubt.
Is there anyone else that, that we're hearing from this evening?
I'm Angela Carmichael. I'm with D.R. Horton. Thank you so much, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. We appreciate your time so much for going over this application and your consideration. I wanted to make two points. What we believe is substantial completion is paved roads and with curb. D.R. Horton does not own the property, so we are not going to purchase it until those improvements are substantially complete, which we want to be able to drive on them. So I just wanted to make that clarification so that you have some resolve of what our expectations are of the property owner. Um, the second thing is I want to just add on to the exhibit that's above that Shelley had prepared. So to put it into context, we understand some of the neighbors are concerned, obviously, with existing conditions. The existing conditions are around 24 foot in width, which, if you see the black line that's on the screen, that's roughly around the existing conditions. The intersection at, right at that point is going to be widened to about 54 feet in width. Then it narrows down, and there's going to be additional lanes that are put on Sentinel. So not only on 287 will there be a right turn lane that's added, left turn lane going northbound, that, those improvements will help the current situation that these neighbors are facing with this intersection. So I wanted to add that as well. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking to us this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification on substantial as well, so.
Yeah, that was easy enough to answer. Don't know why it wasn't answered before.
Okay.
Could I just?
Um, Harry, let me ask you, just, um, Harvey, one quick question. On number six on the stipulation, the sales and construction office is approved with this TUP, cannot be occupied until the offsite improvements of the intersection of Centennial Park and SR 287 are installed. So this means, if, if when I boil this down to the language I understand, you will not be issuing a C of O, certificate of occupancy, because that's, that's the, the hammer that we have right there. Okay?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. That's what we need, that's the hammer. No C of O, they don't get power, they don't get anything.
Not necessarily.
Oh, no, necessarily, that's state law.
Okay. They're still going to start, they're still going to start. But they're not occupied. But we want, we ask for a date. And they're still scheduled.
Guys, I hate, I hate to be the town clerk. I just tell you that these things all have to be on record. Sorry. Thank you.
We're...
I know, these are probably very good conversations the public would love to hear, and so when you...
No, that...
You probably need to just speak in the microphone and have a conversation. Thank you.
That's good. We, we need the tutelage, thank you. Um, and, and the question was, um, do we have any indication from, is it Forestar? That, when, when they intend to pull the permit from ADOT and start construction on the 287 improvements?
Sylvia Rico with Forestar. I am the entitlements director for Forestar. Um, I'm not a land development manager. Unfortunately, my two guys were out, uh, out of town today, so I'm representing Forestar today. Uh, it is my understanding that the permit application actually already went in for ADOT. So it's just a matter of us receiving the actual permit from ADOT. They're usually, their estimated time for their processes is usually a week to two weeks max. So we submitted the application about a week ago, so it could be any day now, just either next week or the latest, this week potentially, who knows, tomorrow's still Friday, so.
So, as I understand it, there's kind of three pieces to the road safety. There's the 287 work. There is some utility something that has to happen at the end of Centennial meeting 287. And then there's the widening of Centennial. And I say that because in the notes I read, uh, the widening of Centennial won't happen until this utility work is done, which makes sense, right? Because where I'm coming from is I'd like to see the widening of Centennial happen ASAP. And if the ADOT design has been approved, I'd like to see where Forestar is on getting that utility work, so ultimately we have an idea of how soon Centennial can be widened, because it's not wide enough right now.
Right. Obviously, since the utility, uh, infrastructure is going to go underneath the road, that will have to be completed first.
Right.
Otherwise, as, uh, one of the staff members indicated, if that is not completed first, then we would have to come back and basically tear the road apart again.
Right, no, that makes sense.
So, so right now, as soon as we get the permit, we'll start mobilizing and getting our bid packages completed, so we can get the contractors ready to go and start the infrastructure ASAP. So, um, right now, it is estimated that the, in, like, the intract or the on-sites will be completed in September or so, so not far behind after that, the road would be completed. So we're estimating maybe December, the latest, January?
December?
Yeah, well, it, it depends, obviously, I guess, on weather as well, and thi- this is a, a public road that is being utilized on a daily basis, so it cannot be shut down completely to do the construction. You have to do it in sections. So obviously, you have to divert some of the traffic for safety purposes, so you, we will have to do a section first, shut it down, and then, you know, so that traffic still moves. So otherwise, it would be completely shut down, and nobody will be able to operate or, you know, uh, move freely in the road.
Thank you.
And we'll be, and we'll be happy to provide a schedule as soon as we have an actual, you know, schedule to the city staff so that they're aware of the actual, you know, uh, permit scheduling.
Well, it doesn't have to be locked into a date, right? It can be X is when you get your permit, and then how many dates, weeks out.
Exactly. Yes, yes. And, and, and as the staff members indicated, we just got the plans back this week, so we obviously need some time to look at the plans, to find out how much infrastructure and, and obviously availability of our contractors comes into play as well.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, having a phasing plan so that we know how, how those roads are going to be constructed and, and the timeline on them, that would be very helpful.
Definitely.
Especially since we're, um, tying everything with two model homes being constructed, and that they can't be occupied until the improvements are...
Correct.
...complete out on 287. And it looks like these could, will potentially be ready for use somewhere in the September timeframe, and if you say the improvements won't be done until December, then D.R. Horton's...
I mean, we're hoping that they get done prior to that, but, I mean, obviously, there's no guarantees, so that's why I don't want to speak at a turn, and especially because I am not the development manager, so I am not intimate with the schedules as much as they are. I'm, I'm intimate with the entitlement side of it, but not necessarily the construction side of it. So, but, you know, definitely will provide a schedule, and then this way, you have something in writing from the team.
Yeah, I just hope you kind of get, get a flavor of, of the, the feeling here for safety and that if we...
Absolutely.
If, if we get D.R. Horton with two models out there, and then you don't have the road built, and they want to occupy, you know, we're going to say no.
It sounds like Angela has an update.
Yeah, I have a better update than Sylvia.
Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
I did speak with a representative, actually, on the development side, the on sites are to be complete in September is the target, and the target for the ADOT portion of it is scheduled to be done in October. Now, of course, monsoons can delay things, but that is the clear schedule that we have received in writing from Forestar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm less than satisfied.
So, I'm sorry, I forgot your name from D.L. Horton, I just wanted to raise that in the staff recommendations, right, we're talking again, this is a repeat of, kind of, I think, every place, is the developer agrees to keep the site clean, right, to adhere to all the regulations, et cetera. So, it just so happens, as you know, D.L. Horton is also developing in another part of Florence. It's like night and day, two different developers, we are seeing none of these dust issues of big equipment parking on the road, of whatever the issue might be in Anthem that we're seeing downtown. So, we put this staff recommendation in here every time, but we're not seeing that happening down here.
To just clarify, D.R. Horton does not own the property, Forestar owns the property, and they're developing it. So we have two, there are two different construction companies and teams.
So I'm sorry, am I speaking, be speaking with the Forestar representative?
Right, well, we do, we did take a survey of, there has not been any dust complaints from Maricopa County, according to Forestar, on this project. We know we have received some feedback about trash that Forestar has cleaned up, from what I understand, last time we inspected it at D.R. Horton, we didn't see any trash, we didn't see any dust. So, that's probably the difference that you're seeing, is that we have two different companies that own the dirt.
Got you. Thank you. No, I want to make, I want to ask another question. On the TUP, a lot of promises are being made, and a lot of talk about, well, the developer understands, that's their responsibility, because it didn't make it into the final plat, and this goes back to the point of what is in writing exactly, and what recourse do we have if we go ahead and approve the TUP, and none of these roadwork things come to pass? I get it, that they can't open the sales office, and that's a huge hit to D.L. Horton, of course, but we're more concerned about making this happen, and happen right for everybody. And I don't understand what the process is if they don't uphold the recommendations that are made.
I'll speak to that. As the entitlements director, I deal with actually a lot of stipulations, especially on plats, and sometimes items do not get in the plats for one reason or another. However, since we are pulling permits, and we have to have approvals for those permits in order for us to continue the process forward, that's when the inspectors come in, if there's a stipulation on that permit, and we have not done our obligation, in this case, some of those stipulations, basically, you're not giving us approvals, and we can't move forward.
I understand that, and I guess where I'm coming from is, we have seen economic downturns before, and staff, Harvey's made it very clear, that all things depend on the economy, how fast or how slow these things move, and I just want to be sure that the residents are protected, and the residents get some remedy to the issues they already have. And I get, I know you have skin in the game, I know there's a lot at stake without getting the permits, but, you know, should the economy take a downturn, and you decide to hold everything, are they living with this the way it is now?
Mr. Chairman?
This is a project from 2003.
We have, our code, we, our code requires, our subdivision code requires performance, bond, some type of financial surety, so we've collected a financial surety from Forestar, so if they walk away from the project, they leave tomorrow, they go bankrupt, or whatever, we have, we have to go call their bond, take the money, and then complete the improvements. So, we do have financial surety of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
My, my questions, my concerns were still not addressed, nor were reading the notes where it got glossed over, neither were Commissioner Vanderstarr's, I don't want to speak for you, but.
I was waiting my turn.
Please, go ahead.
So the stipulations cited before were about the permit being issued for the sales construction offices, not for the first single-family home. So, that's what I'm recommending we update the stipulation to.
Right, and based on these notes, looking at this, well, hopefully. But the stipulations that we asked were basically where the improvements were completed before we issue permits. What they're asking for is this temporary use permit, and, yeah, you know, a week or so, we'll get the, we'll get the permit.
I'm comfortable with allowing this to move forward, so that they can start on their sales offices, so that they're being completed about the same time the improvements are being completed to the roads, with the understanding that the town will not issue a C of O, a certificate of occupancy, because that's the magic ticket that allows them to go into those, legally go into those buildings, and APS will not energize those buildings without a C of O. So that's, that's the hammer that they have, that they can use. I don't think it's fair to the builder to make them wait until everything is done to start working on their models. Now, I think it is fair that they can't do any single-family residences until all those things are done, because that's when people are actually going to come and want to live there. So I'm, I'm comfortable with letting them start their models, so that they are ready to go when Forestar is ready to turn the project over to them, and that all the roads and ingress, ingress is ready to go, with the knowledge that they're not going to get certificate of occupancy, even use those models until all of that is done, and then they can't start regular, single-family homes until all that's done.
I'm going to respectfully disagree.
I'll make a motion then, see what happens. Make a motion for approval of a temporary use permit for PZ-23-18 with the stipulations that are here from staff and from commission.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have, I've made the motion, and Commissioner Pro has seconded that, take a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We got two ayes on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in disfavor, say nay, please?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, two two and one abstaining?
Nay.
Okay, we have three nays, so that dies.
I came here fully intending to support this, because we, I want to say to D.L. Horton and Forestar, we want this to happen. I think I'm having a little bit of communication, miscommunication with our town staff. I'm saying no, because we realize this is very important, and for many meetings now, our minutes have not been the same meeting I was at, and, you know, I get minor things, but this was a major point to us, and what we're trying to establish with our town staff, I realize we're learning a lot, but we need credibility, we need trust, and when some of the basic items are, were not being answered, I'm not comfortable in just going with substantial, that's what it means in the industry, that we check, that it's in who judgment, it's in staff's judgment. Well, you can say that, but what's so important to this commission, and what we spend a lot of time on, is not being recognized, and therefore not being valued by staff, because if our hard work, and this is very difficult, and I see Mayor, ex-Major Rankin left, it is very hard being on PZ, and I have the utmost respect for our chair, and it's very hard for me to vote against his motion, but I feel that if we don't start getting back on the same track with staff, and other developments start coming our way, we're always going to be, in effect, penalizing our residents and the builders, because we're not in sync. And if we, we need to have a work session, if we need to have a meeting, I know it's been suggested that we could have an executive session with Cliff there to talk about these issues, but I feel that strongly about it. Meeting minutes are important, and should the builder go, and go back to council because they don't like what's going on here, what is council going to use? They're going to use all the documentation, they're going to use the meeting minutes, they're going to use what you say in your, in your staff report, and that's why I was so adamant about separating what you do from what we do. We say, we'd like a stipulation that says it has to have another egress. We don't say it has to be through Adamsville or Main Street, that's, that, your planners, right? If we say something about trails, I don't know where the trail should go, that's up to you. I, we did not say it has to connect in the northeast. So I want to be very clear in this documentation, because they're legal documents, and at any time, these can be reviewed going back six months to a year, and if they're not stated correctly and in the right context, how is council supposed to make a decision? So, that's my reason for not, not supporting the vote tonight. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we table it again, and we come back with the corrected minutes, that, and with those minutes, that staff looks at the specific requests Commissioner Capolongo made, and come back with some sort of answer. That's my motion.
So, just clarification, your motion is to again postpone the TUP vote?
Until we get the meeting minutes corrected, and answers
Not just mine, but Commissioner Vanderstarr's as well.
I'm sorry?
Not just my, my contentions, but Mr., Commissioner Vanderstarr's as well.
All the requests made by the commission at the June 1st meeting.
So for clarification, the motion is to postpone again?
That's how I feel.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to delay this for two more weeks by Vice Chair Adam, and the
Do we want to say two weeks, or do we want to make the next
Mr. Chair, could we
I'm sorry, for the next, next P and Z
We have more time, you know, to make sure that, the clerks ask the clerks office to do verbatim minutes, so we can do verbatim minutes, and it'll take some time, so could we have more time, not bring it back, maybe in two weeks?
So, to the next meeting
Just continue it.
Just trying to pull
Till the minutes are completed.
Right, the next meeting would be July 6th, so you're looking to postpone to July 20?
That'd be fine.
And then they should have the permit from ADOT as well by then, too, so it should all be wrapped up with a nice little bow on it.
Okay, so the motion by Vice Chair Adam, and the second by Commissioner Capolongo.
To postpone to July 20.
And now with the clarification to postpone to July 20th, get these other questions answered. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, look like we got all of us voting aye on that one. Now, just so that staff knows, let's make sure that those questions are iterated, so that we make sure that they're answered, so please.
What I would suggest is staff watch the video from the last meeting, it's all there.
Yes, I agree. It is, it's all there.
So, maybe verbatim minutes, like Mr. Kraus suggested.
Okay, just wanted, just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah, I don't want anything to fall through the cracks.
Staff, are we good? Okay. 7A, future agenda items and updates.
For future agenda, other than for the July 20th, to bring back this item, or the previous item, coming forward, there will be a Starbucks design review for the Anthem Marketplace, that should be coming in July as well.
Is that would be the 20th versus the 6th?
It probably will be the 20th. Other than that, I have no other agenda, future agenda items.
And I think we did 7B already, with Town Manager's presentation on CIP discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll look forward to updates on that, too, as, as more
We'll do a monthly update on that.
Very good. Call to the commission, current events, and request for any future agenda items. One of the things that we kind of bounced off a little bit here, that might be just try to get some progress started on that, is how we interact, particularly with the San Carlos Irrigation District, with their canal system and joint use as part of our trail system, because I know, it seems like I recall when we did the general plan, that some of those, those canals were actually indicated as future opportunities for trails throughout the community, but it sounds like we've kind of had a loggerhead with them on using that, so perhaps we should start that process now, so that we can make that happen, and that might be a discussion item for us later on, when you can kind of give us an update on what that's, what's happening with that, that would be great, sorry. And as usual, we appreciate our Vice, Vice Mayor Maldonado, and our council member Mendoza.
Mendoza.
Yeah, boy, I've done, I'm promoting him over here.
I could see it on your face, you knew it was wrong as you were saying it.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Mendoza and Councilmember Bucelato being here with us, and we appreciate our new town manager coming and talking to us this evening, thank you very much. And with that, your favorite motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ah, you got me, aye.
Motioned and second, all in favor, aye, right?
Aye.
We're, we're done.